Resources Hall of Fame. Set up for everybody that's in here to meet while we have executive session. So when we call for executive session, I'll open the door and direct you out.
Okay, thank you.
And they have a TV in there set up so they'll know when to come back.
Okay, and get them to stay during this time. We want them to.
Yeah. I don't see any reason why not. I agree.
Okay, Jay, would you mind closing that door? Thank you very much. Hi Garth, hi Amelia.
Hello.
Y'all doing okay?
Hanging in there, how are you?
Jan shared with me your, your days, Amelia, I'm so sorry.
Thank you.
Um, let's see, is everyone ready? And you just let me know. Uh, good evening, it's December fifteenth of twenty twenty, before we open our meeting, Councilmember Garth Hens is going to offer a word of prayer.
Father, we push pause in the day, we acknowledge that you are good, that you are King, that you are holy, that there's no one like you. We are grateful that you are healer and we ask that you would come and that you would bring some healing over C V even now, that you would remove some of the pain that he's in and the discomfort that he's in. Father, we ask that you give us favor and wisdom to know what directions to take, what decisions to make. We want to bring a smile to your face in the way that we care for our citizens as best we can, as we've been entrusted. And so we give you this time, come and have your way, and choose a saint, amen.
Thank you Garth. Now call our meeting of December fifteenth, twenty twenty to order. Would you please join me in reciting the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So beginning our evening, we're going to go into an executive session pursuant to Texas Government Code Section five five one dash zero seven four. It is now five thirty-one P M. Uh, and those of you that are here that want to remain, City Secretary is going to show you where you can wait. And so I believe we will have our city manager and our city attorney remain, please.
Let's not just follow Stephen, he's headed down that hallway. Just go to the right. And the TV's on, so you should, oh, I'll just watch that on the, on my.
Okay. Okay. We okay? Okay, good. So let's let Mr. Da, the, our Mr. Davis, come on up. And let you, uh, start this conversation for us, please.
Thank you very much, Your Honor. I, I, I just can't help myself, thank you very much, ma'am, uh, council members. Um, it's been my very great pleasure, I guess for the better part of twenty years to have worked on many different legal matters with Robert Davis and the Flowers Davis Law Firm on matters from litigation to open meetings to Public Information Act, to employment law, um, and just about everything in between. Uh, I guess I could say I've had a front row seat to see the good work that they do. I, I guess, Robert, it'd probably be safe to say there's, there are not many counties in these Texans that y'all haven't at some point assisted, probably in the neighborhood of forty-five or so, a number of municipalities. Uh, the Flowers Davis Firm, I think, currently represents the city of Bullard and also maybe Big Sandy, Big Sandy, um, and assists Greg, Greg County, I guess at this time really with, with their civil needs in, in general. They have the capability to really, from soup to nuts, uh, from, from everything, from Public Information Act, Open Meetings Act, uh, matters all the way to municipal prosecution, um, which is, which is a, a, a very good thing, uh, because we, of course, cover all, all those matters and everything. In between, in the last several years, uh, the Flowers Davis Firm has actually worked with the city on several matters. Robert's firm helped us with a dispute with A T and T, uh, that was a somewhat difficult situation. Um, we were dealing with their captured counsel out of Denver, Colorado, and, uh, you know, a big firm and really bearing me in, in paperwork. And so Robert, I appreciate it very much, stepped in, um, and rolled up all that paper and swatted A T and T across the nose, um, and, and, uh, in, in fine fashion. Matter of fact, we, we, we went on a dispositive motion against one of the biggest corporations in America. And they did not appeal it because they didn't want to appeal it. Uh, they didn't want, want, uh, that to become law across the board. And so I, I think, and so did a fantastic job on that just recently, uh, his firm also, another partner in the firm, Mitch Beard has helped us with some collection matters on some delinquent hoteliers, and a very good effect. And so now that, that, those two entities, those two hotels are, are caught up and they're having to pay, uh, higher legal fees. So I give those as two, uh, two good examples. I could go, you know me, I could go on and on, and I will go on and on.
Well, one of the main things I think we need to just, uh, remind ourselves of is that the reason we were interested in their firm was because they were sort of turnkey and could do all of the things that, that the unique position we have here, um, could handle.
Absolutely. Um, and I've, I've visited with, with Robert about that, that, you know, we, we do have things any given day, it's, it's anything from environmental matters to litigation matters to municipal court matters, employment matters, um, all the way across the board. And, um, Flowers Davis Firm, gosh, Robert, I guess y'all have what, over twenty, twenty attorneys?
About twenty attorneys.
Yeah. And, um, uh, there's a whole, whole portion of the firm that this, that's, they're as good as they come when it comes to, uh, real estate matters. Um, and I think will be able to, to help us greatly with, with zoning issues and, and, you know, real estate matters come up constantly for us. So really across the board, I do, I, I've seen firsthand, believe they be just turnkey for what we need during this interim period.
Right. We had another question about the timing, is that going to be able, is there going to be able to be a little bit of, of overlap?
We, I've, I've, uh, poor Robert, um, I've already talked to him a little bit about a few matters that we would like to, to maybe start in on before the first, actually.
Good.
And, you know, one of, we have, you know, several things going, well, a lot really going on, in a lot of areas. Uh, but with the, with the airport and some things that, that we see in the future with that, that flight school that are so very exciting. Um, and we're pretty far down the road on our agreement there, but I, I do want to make sure that that's seamless and that we, we get that squared away. Uh, we have, uh, some other issues on some of our economic development matters that I think we, I, I would like to start in immediately on. And then just in general, um, possibly if, if, if Robert or, or somebody with his firm might be able to spend a little time with us for an afternoon or a morning or so, um, over the next couple of weeks, that would be great, just to kind of talk about the matters that are really kind of, kind of hanging fire for us right now.
Sure. Uh, Mr. Bolden, do you have any questions for either gentleman?
Just one question, and, and this is interim position, right?
Yes.
Is there days and times, frames that he's going to be here full-time, or you could discuss that with him?
Well, we haven't, we, you know, the, we would, we would, uh, get a little deeper into that, uh, you know, if, and I guess to back up a little bit, the way our charter reads is that the, the council appoints for an indefinite term, uh, the, the city attorney, and, and that's at will. Uh, so it's not for a set time. With regard to, you know, how we would manage those things, we talked some about that. And I, I don't want to, I'll certainly step to the side and let Robert address these things because I'm sure he could do a far better job than I can. But I think if we had a, a council meeting, um, or if we had, uh, say a committee meeting, if we had a, a particular matter that we would need boots on the ground, we would need somebody here, um, I think that we would be able to, to, to work through those, those issues and, and have somebody actually here, but try to do as much as we could through Zoom and through, uh, electronic communication.
All right, thank you.
Good question. Yes, sir.
Um, Garth?
I'm excited and looking forward to it. I'm grateful to have somebody so close within ninety minutes, but no, no question, questions or any pressing concerns.
Okay, Jay?
I don't have any particular questions, no. I'm confident in, in our Mr. Davis's assessment.
And Amelia?
No, Mayor, no questions from me. I'm, I'm also, um, excited and grateful that we have somebody so close and so qualified to take care of us while we find somebody else.
Thank you.
I would say Councilmember Fisher, your ears should burn. Um, I was visiting with Mr. Davis earlier and, uh, he speaks extremely highly of, of your firm. And, uh, I think that maybe y'all have worked on some matters together in the past.
We, we've had a little bit of, of overlap, and I've always heard really good things, um, particularly coming out of my dad's mouth about you guys, and that is a rare thing, so.
I'm honored he would say that, I, I think very highly of you. I, I think Amelia, that's, that's the acid test.
I would agree.
Yeah, and, and I, I, I guess I'll, I'll end with this, certainly any other questions, and I'll step to the side and, and let Robert, uh, say a quick word. Well, first of all, we're not kin folks. I wish we were because he's, he's a very successful attorney. But just absolutely, um, on top of his game in every way, never have I seen a situation, whether it was going into a courtroom on a very serious matter, and we've taken on some pretty serious matters, um, that he wasn't absolutely prepared and didn't represent whatever entity it was to the, to the greatest and finest extent I think that, that one could hope for. He is honest, as the day is long, um, and just a flat-out good guy. And, uh, you know, every now and then you run across a firm or an attorney that might get a little heavy-handed on whatever it might be, including billing, uh, on occasion. Robert is so honest and everybody I have dealt with over these years in his firm has, has been just cut out of that same cloth. And so I, I, I would not, I would not make this recommendation if I did not absolutely believe that this is the best interim solution for the city of Nacogdoches.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, Mr. Davis?
Thank you, Mayor, Council.
Yes.
Um, we're excited about the opportunity, and I, I can't say enough good things about Jeff. And I know that losing him is going to be hard for the city, but, um, this county is going to have a district court judge who's going to excel in every way. And, uh, you know, when people, especially attorneys, look at communities, they look at your district court judges and to see who they are and to see how fair they are and how honest they are and how honorable. And, uh, with Jeff on your bench, I think it's a real attractive feature for this community in this county, I really do. And, uh, I'm honored that Jeff would ask, and, uh, and we want to do everything that we can possibly do to get y'all through this interim period while y'all look for a replacement. And, uh, and even after that, if there's, if the replacement needs help and assistance on things that we've handled and haven't completed, then we're happy to do it. And we're down here a lot for the county anyway. So I had planned on coming to every city council mem, uh, meeting that I possibly could. So if y'all have any questions, I'll certainly field them.
Anybody have a question? No? Looking okay, don't see any hands raised, okay? Well, thank you so much.
Thank you, Mayor.
Uh, and we really appreciate you, your coming, making this trip. It's really, it's kind of important to.
To see, it is important to.
You're a real person.
It is important to see people and get a, a feel for each other, so.
Absolutely, absolutely.
I appreciate it. And Amelia, please say hello to your father for me.
Yes, sir, I will.
Oh goodness. Okay, so what we are going, thank you very much. What we are going to need to do is, uh, a, a council member needs to make a motion, uh, to appoint, um, is it Davis and Fl, Flowers and Davis? Flowers and Davis, um, as our inter, our city attorney indefinitely, what word did you use?
Well, I, I think, I think that, you know, once we come out into, into, out of executive session, um, if someone was so inclined, they could certainly make a, a motion to appoint the law firm of Flowers and Davis, uh, to perform the duties, interim, well, duties of, of, uh, city attorney on an interim basis.
Okay. Somebody got that? Okay, great. I like to get all this out of the way before we go back on live, whatever. Yeah. Does anyone have any other discussion before we go back into our regular session? Mario, is there anything you needed to add?
No, ma'am.
Okay. So.
Want me to allow the others back in?
Yes. I think I'll wait till everybody gets back in before we do this. Okay, yeah, we're, we're going to wait until they get in and get seated.
Hey Jan, the policeman is standing outside.
Oh, yeah. He's standing cold any longer than he needs to.
Okay. Uh, so pursuant to Texas Government Code Section five five one dash zero seven four, uh, it is still December fifteenth of twenty twenty, it is five forty-five P M. Council has returned from executive session, uh, after their, uh, after discussing, uh, matters relating to, um, interim city attorney and related legal services.
I moved that we appoint Flowers and Davis as our interim city attorney.
Second.
Okay, moved and seconded that we appoint Flowers and Davis Law Firm as our interim, uh, city attorney. Uh, no further discussion, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No. Okay, unanimously pass. Thank you so much. And be safe driving back.
Thank you, Mayor. Appreciate it very much.
Uh, so agenda item number five is a, a, a short work session. We are going to receive a demonstration of the NAC three one one application, uh, used for citizen input and work order processing. And I believe we're going to have Steve Bartlett this evening, we hadn't seen you in a little while.
Mayor, Council, Steve Bartlett. Yes, I was much younger last time I was here. So, uh, thank you. So we're going to try to navigate through this. Is my PowerPoint up?
Yes.
You all be patient with me. So I want to talk to you tonight a little bit about, uh, a, a new, uh, citizen engagement item that we have called NAC three one one. So this is really an engagement platform that allows us to both obtain and get comments and track those comments from citizens. This is a new way to do it, as you guys know, we get a lot of those over the phone or in the parking lot, and so this is going to give us a way to allow them digitally, uh, to communicate with us. It's available as an app for both an Android phone or a iOS operating an Apple phone, as well as a Windows-based application, of which we use one for a, a background panel, I'll show you in a minute. We think cell phones will be our primary portal for communicating with the public just because people are mobile and they can see things, and so we think this is a great way to have a cellphone app. It does work with the GPS module in their phone, which can help locate where they are on a map if they don't know their address, or if they, uh, do have an address and they're not at that location, they can certainly do that, and I'll show you that as well in a moment. The citizens will also now receive email updates as to the progress of their request or their question or their problem, and also that it's been resolved or finished. So we'll be able to communicate much better that way. So not only is this a good way to engage our citizens and get feedback, but it's creating an internal work order system for us. We've had other work order systems, uh, and actually different ones. Public Works has had one that was created in-house that you've seen, uh, for Kerry Walker, and others have had paper ones. So this basically creates a new, uh, work order system that allows us to streamline all of our workflows and really reduce, uh, uh, reduce our wasted time and get our resources allocated in the right place. It allows us to deploy crews for repair, investigate code enforcement actions, and things that, that we really need to do in a timely fashion. This also, we think, will get us a resolution to citizens' problems faster than we're currently doing now. And, and I kind of tell this story, um, one of you sees a pothole on a street, or a citizen tells you about a pothole on the street, you call city manager's office, they call me, I call Kerry, he calls Boyd, he goes to the patch truck and they go out and fix it. And then the next day, we see each other in the parking lot and you say, how about that pothole, did it get fixed? And I'm like, I don't know. And so we go back through that sequence, back and forth and back and forth, and, and we've done that together, and we actually spent a lot of time and effort doing that. So this is now going to allow us to short-circuit all that and also have a console you can use, I can use, and the citizen can use to see that these things are done. So really, uh, other big advantage is management can track these. So I'm able to look, or all of us as managers or directors can look at our departments and see what's going on, what work orders are done, which ones are completed, uh, and that's a, a great way for us to be able to keep track. The third item that I think's a really a benefit, uh, when I show you this, is we're going to get some unparalleled historical data. So you remember when we do our street update every year with you, I show you, one of the things I show you is the heat map for potholes. Remember, our pothole truck takes track of every single pothole they fix, and we're able to plot those and say, boy, this street is bad and this street's not so bad, and it helps us prioritize that. This is going to give us that kind of data after we accumulate it for a little bit on water line repairs and sewer leaks and trail problems and everything you can think of. We're going to be able to harvest this data and really use it for better budget planning and really better large project capital improvement planning. So we'll have some good basis other than, gee, we feel like that's a bad sewer line, I think we fixed it a bunch of times over the last ten years. We'll be able to harvest that data and help it. So we've actually been operating for, um, uh, several months using this, test driving it, found some humps and bumps, and we've been working to correct them. It's been live, believe it or not, but we haven't told the public about it much. Tonight, they're being told about it, as well as you. Uh, but we processed, we had five hundred and sixty work orders that were processed when I wrote this, we're now, you know, over six hundred work orders. So we're using it internally as our work order system, but when a citizen calls me now and says, I've got a pothole on the street or a water line leak here, I literally do this while I'm sitting there on the phone with them, and it's off and gone. So we're actually using it for real life, we just haven't taught the public yet how to use it. So that's our, certainly our next step. We're going to begin outreach to the public in January, and actually that probably starts tonight, K T R E, uh, is doing a, a spot tonight on it. And so we'll probably have lots of downloads by in the morning, and we're looking forward to that. So we're anxious to see now with the public activated on this, uh, how it works. So initially, this costs fifteen thousand dollars, a little over fifteen thousand dollars, and there's a eleven thousand, six hundred dollar annual renewable fee, so you will see that in our budgets in the future. It's not a whole lot of money for what we thinks the benefit, both on the staff side and the side. So let me do a demonstration, you're going to help me fire up, so I'm going to do, um, there we go. See, he's, I'd be lost if he wasn't here, thank you so much. So whether it's on your phone or whether it's on your computer, this is the screen you see. And, uh, Garth and Amelia, can you see that?
I see their heads, not.
Okay, they're not, okay, thank you. So this is not just, uh, what we process citizen comics and engagement with, but this is a screen that does everything from connect you to Channel twenty-one, show you, uh, connect you to our webpage for jobs, uh, it goes how to pay your utility bills, so this is a total citizen page to go to. It'll link to the C V B for entertainment, so it's a great place to be, and now they'll have it on their phone. But if you look at the bottom, uh, we've added a section down here. There we go. It says request. So again, whether you're on Windows-based or whether you are on a phone-based, these screens all look the same, just squished a little bit. So I am, I can run you through all the menus, but I know you're short on time tonight, so I'll run you through one example of how to do it, and then if you want to go back in detail, you just bring me back and we'll, and we'll do that. So, uh, it's basically real, I'm sorry, I'm looking through my trifocals, you know that. So, uh, we're going to select a report type, and that brings us up to some categories that are general, and you can see we're already kind of trying to direct them into pods where individual departments will take care of things. So we're trying to, to get them in the right area the first time so that their requests are expedited. So we have a place where you can ask questions, you can talk about problems in and around your home, in your neighborhood, uh, you can talk about problems in parks, we can talk about restaurant problems like, um, um, health concerns, for example, or accessibility. And then we have, of course, your standard streets and utilities. So if it's okay, I'm just going to run through one example here with streets. What happens is you select that and go to the map. It'll bring up, there we go. So if you have an iPhone or a Android phone with GPS, it will take you to where you are. But that may or may not be, you may have driven home after you solved a problem, and so you can enter an address up here at the top, or you can still click on the map and say, hey, I have a pothole right here, and it will pick the address for you and post it. So now we know where it is, and believe it or not, this is one of our prompts when we get calls, well, where was that? Well, somewhere north of Burger King. And so for us, sometimes it's a hunt and peck issue, especially with a lot of new students in town who don't necessarily know all the street names. So this has been, uh, helpful. So the citizen can click done, and, and you can see it leads them, the red X is next, tell us more details, and each of these menus are customized, so this one's particularly customized for streets, remember, we selected streets. So we have a set of menus, and we took these from, uh, feedback we got. So when we got calls, we tried to remember all the things that always get asked pertaining to streets. The good news is, we work this back in, we create this, so as we get new things or we'll, we'll add to the list or, or take from the list. So it's something that we can create and morph and change. But in this case, let's just do the good old famous pothole, and then you can come down here and type a description that says, I got a pothole that's big enough for a Volkswagen to fit in, what are y'all thinking? And then you can tell me, done. Can you hit it there? Can you click it on your end? There we go. Here, yeah, let's type something in there. It may be waiting for that, I apologize. There we go, it's waiting for me to type something. So we give it some details, you see the next item up is you can add a photo, so if you're on the web-based, you can take a photo off your hard drive. If you're on your phone, it goes to a little different look, and it says, do you want to get it out of your photo library, or do you want to use your camera? So you can take a picture of the pothole, uh, with a sad face and send it to us, or, or not. And then last is an option to keep this confidential. So you do register the app when you get it, so we know who you are, so we can correspond with you. But if you want to keep this confidential, it doesn't go where other people in the public can see what you reported. In other words, if you had an issue with your neighbor and you wanted to report something to your neighbor, you may not want that to be public, and we understand that. So this is the option that you would check for that. And so if we hit submit, and I'm not going to do that because somebody will be looking for potholes shortly if I do that, uh, then it goes and we instantly get an email, I would get an email that says, hey, your request has been received. So, uh, and then we process, so let me break back to the, yeah. I'm sorry, are there any questions before I get out of this, or menus? Or I can show them to you?
You want to wait, or do you?
Oh, it doesn't matter to me, whichever way you want to do it.
Okay. Well, let's go ahead.
Okay.
Yeah, see what else there is.
We can bring it back up if we need to.
Yes, that would be great.
Okay. Okay, so what happens after you send the request in, is it gets directed to the right department and then can then be assigned even work crews and work orders created as quick as you hit that send button. So this is a example of what our staff console looks like, so this is what we get to see. And this is just an example of requests that have come in and their status, they've been received, they may have been completed, we can sort these by any imaginable way that you want, uh, from location to type or maintenance or whatever. So it gives us managing all this a way to look daily or hourly or what we want to do and find this. So if we go in and pick a request, basically we get a s, a sheet that looks like this that comes up, and it shows us, you know, what the problem was, and by the way, this is a real one, what the problem was, was a dead dog in front of the Coliseum on the University Drive side. It tells us who it was assigned to, which is assigned to Jose Olivera, who's in sanitation, and then what was the resolution. And the bottom area that you see, uh, down here is a list of several emails that went out that said, hey, we got it, we're processing it, we have found it, fixed it, and closed it, and by the way, he makes a note that it was not a, a dead dog, it was a beaver. And that's a, that's true, true story. So, uh, if, now, if we wanted to find out annually how many beaver strikes we had on roads, well, we could be able to run a summary and get that, and I suspect it's not a large number, but, uh, interestingly, all this data is then available for us to, to use and harvest, and, and, and so it's great. But this is kind of what we're watching, and those emails that go out, go to whoever the requestor was in this case. But this is kind of what we're watching, and those emails that go out, go to whoever the requestor was in this case, the, the citizen. So we think this feedback is great, we think it's a great opportunity to be able to engage people. Uh, and, and we hope in a, in a way that feels friendly and responsive. Transparency and response is really the, the premise for this whole thing, so. So Mayor, that's the end of, of my presentation, so after any public comment, I'll be happy to answer questions.
Um, let's see, if, um, Garth, do you have anything you would like to ask?
No, I'm eager to download it, that's awesome. But no, no questions.
Okay, uh, Jay.
Um, no questions really, I'm, uh, you know, possibly the layperson, the, the recurring fee each year might seem a little high. But given the efficiencies that this is going to, uh, um, facilitate, uh, that seems like quite a bargain to me. And I'm, I'm very excited to have it in the works.
Amelia?
Yeah, I just, I wanted to ask a question about how it worked once. I mean, I saw the, the, the page that you showed where it shows, I don't know if it was like the list of work orders or what. But in terms of accountability, is there somebody who is checking to see that each is completed? Or, or how, how is that happening to make sure that things don't fall through the cracks the way that, um, it wa- it was much easier for our earlier system for things to, to, to fall through the cracks?
Sure, no, and that's a great question. So there's two things that are going on, these requests come into a designated person, Amelia. And in this case, then they're assigned, like you saw, to Jose Olivera a while ago, or assigned. Well, um, in this case, that's in sanitation, so Kerry Walker was also notified. And Kerry Walker begins to track this request and sees that it was executed and closed. Now, what happens if we put it off and put it off is this is set up to, at an interval of a few days, to begin to retransmit and it will email Kerry and it will email Kim in this case. Uh, there's no resolution to this, there's no resolution to this. So, uh, it actually pester's us into being really good at this. So, uh, yes, I think it's built into the system as well as the fact now management can monitor this very, very easily wherever they are. So we're hoping between those two things that we don't have things fall in the cracks, and you're absolutely right. I, I laugh how many times at night I send myself an email because somebody told me in the Kroger parking lot that there was a pothole somewhere. And I almost forgot to do it, so you're absolutely right, so we're, we're excited from that standpoint. I, I will tell you and, and then shut up, but some of our staff were a little stressed over having all this documented when we used to just drive by and fix things. So, uh, they've been kind of getting acclimated to this, but I think they've all found out they're getting things done faster. The average response time for the six hundred work orders we've done has been a little over four days from beginning to resolution. So we feel really good about that. Did that answer, I'm sorry, all your question, Amelia?
Yeah, that was great, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Yeah, to follow up on, uh, Amelia's question. When a citizen, uh, calls in, does he get like a reference number? And maybe in three or four days it hadn't been, his issue hadn't been taken care of? Does he have a reference number to come back and pull that up?
And it's even better than that. So because we know that it's this citizen in particular that made the request, he at any time can pull up all of his or her requests. So he doesn't have to look for a reference number, we know who they are and they can go at any time and see what the status of them are and, and then contact us again if they want. So, uh, so they're literally customized to that person, they don't have to seek it, it's right there on their phone.
So that, that means he, at one time or another, he gave up his like email.
Yes, so when you download the app or, or the desktop version, you have to register and there's some, uh, email information to do that. And it's the only way the system works, um, so.
All right, thank you.
Yes, sir.
I, I liked the program.
Thank you.
Yeah, this is great, I hope you all are ready because we have a lot of people that like to go around and find things that are a little less than standard.
Tred has been marvelous, Mayor, and setting this up, as you can imagine, we've been working for months. This looks simple, but it's been, it's taken some months. And Tred walked into my office and he said, you know, if you do this tonight, they're, we're gonna have a request in the morning. Are you ready? I said, yeah, we're, we're ready, so.
Good, well, that's great, thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate it. Um, our next topic, we will, um, look at strategies to assist in cities' planning and economic development efforts and hear from Elena Chafin. Good evening.
Good evening, thank you, Council, Elena Chafin, City Planner. Um, we are very excited to be bringing this discussion to this evening. Um, before we get started, I do just want to mention that we are gonna be covering a lot of information. And so please don't hesitate to stop and interrupt and ask questions or, uh, points of clarification along the way. Um, a lot of these plans and studies are things that a lot of other cities do, but they will be new for Nacogdoches. And so, uh, we expect you as well as people watching at home to have lots of questions and, um, wanna, wanna talk about it more, and we're excited about that. So we are going to start out by talking about some recent changes in leadership, uh, that Nacogdoches has experienced this year and the kinds of opportunities that that presents itself with. Um, we're also going to touch on some of the city's current long-range planning and studies that we have either adopted or are currently undertaking. And then we'll discuss a list of potential studies and plans that, uh, city staff has identified, working with other departments, um, that would further a number of the city's long-term goals and objectives. Um, I did want to take a moment and let you know that we did make some minor changes to the PowerPoint slides from what was in your packet. Uh, those include, um, that matrix that included the estimated cost and the timeline for the various projects. We broke those into two slides, the first one is gonna show you the funded projects that are currently underway. And then the second one will just have the unfunded ones, so it's a little bit easier to ta- digest and view, especially for the people watching at home. And we also incorporated the cost of one of the studies into the total city investment total. Um, this was the Risk and Resilience Assessment and Emergency Response Plan. And we didn't include it initially because it's required by regulation. Um, so it's one of those things, it's not funded, but it needs to be funded, um, but we did go ahead and incorporate it in that total number. And then we also included, um, estimations for timelines and completion for the various types of studies. So as we go through the descriptions, you'll see a little, uh, parentheses beside the title and it'll give you like a month range, six to eight months or twelve to eighteen months. They give you an idea of how long those studies actually take to complete. So those are just some of the differences between, uh, the PowerPoint slides that were in your packet and then the ones that we'll be reviewing this evening. So with that, we'll get started. So this year, Nacogdoches, uh, has gone through a number of changes in new community leadership, including a brand-new superintendent for the Nacogdoches I S D, who was hired on in March of this year. Uh, we also have a new university president at S F A and a new city manager, both of which came on board in August of this year. So these changes in leadership coupled with, uh, the growth that's anticipated with the, um, future I sixty-nine improvements create a opportunity to reevaluate, identify, and then plan for current and future needs, um, of the community with a fresh set of eyes. And city council in the past, in the recent past, has also had a lot of discussion regarding, uh, long-term planning efforts, um, including the age of the current comprehensive plan, which was adopted in two thousand and three. Um, and I've had a couple of discussions about updating the land use plan and transportation plan and some of those other, uh, chapters in that document. There's also been a lot of interest and discussion of council in neighborhood revitalization and infill development and creating long-term pos- uh, policy initiatives and strategies to address some of those goals and objectives. And with this in mind, staff was directed to, uh, conduct an inventory of existing plans that may be in need of an update or revision and then identify additional plans and studies needed to further current future, uh, planning, engineering, and economic development efforts. Uh, this was a collaborative effort, working with the city manager's office, engineering and Netco. Uh, specifically, I'd like to thank, uh, Ms. Larissa Philpot, who was instrumental in, in gathering and compiling a lot of that information from the various departments. And it was really good to work with Netco, especially Larissa being the previous city planner. So we could work together and kind of brainstorm and identify those, um, efforts that would have a mutual benefit for the city and identify some of those longstanding, um, issues that the city's still currently facing. So, um, that was really important for this process, and it's still an ongoing process. Uh, since we put this together, we've actually identified a couple of additional plans, uh, that we, that we may be adding in the future, um, just for discussion purposes. Um, but this is a very dynamic issue and it is, is ongoing and, uh, we continue to work with other city departments to identify needs and resources that could, um, help them further their goals and objectives. So the, all of these planning efforts, um, are key to bridging the gap between where Nacogdoches is today and where we want to be in the future. And the intent is to create a holistic, comprehensive, uh, strategic action plan essentially to help the city manage our growth and resources. So that's the, uh, primary goal behind, uh, the various proposed plans and studies. So on your screen, you'll see a combined list of both plans and studies that the city is currently identi- uh, currently undertaking. And this is identified by a check mark in the first column on the left, as well as additional proposed plans identified by staff. So where you see a blank, uh, those are plans or studies that either, um, have not been funded and or approved. And your packet, we did include a little short description for each of these items. And we'll go over those in more detail as we move through the presentation. But generally, um, all of these plans are intended, are intended to help inform policy development and funding, uh, for public programs such as C I P programs, um, economic development efforts and other community, uh, planning programs. Um, all of these studies except one include outside consulting services. And, uh, the one that doesn't include outside consulting services is the incentive policy, which is an in-house update that's being conducted by Netco. Um, and these consultants play a key role in supplementing city personnel since they usually offer a higher level of professional experience and expertise um, than may exist on staff. And they also help take out some of that perceived bias that you might have from doing it in-house. And so, uh, current city staff, including department heads, usually wear a lot of hats um, and simply may not have the capacity, uh, to take on some of these additional efforts. So that's why, um, outside consulting services are so essential to some of these programs. Thank you, so as I said, uh, this is one of the slides, it's a little bit different from what you had in your packet. Um, for each particular plan or study, the title is bolded. And then out beside it in parentheses, you have a, a month range for the estimated time that those plans are typically completed. A comprehensive plan, so I know that you're very familiar with. This is the official policy document guiding long-range planning and community development within the city. Uh, it's usually updated every ten years. Uh, the last update that the city did for our comprehensive plan was in two thousand and three, so we're, we are a little bit behind schedule. Uh, this plan provides a vision for the future of the city by reviewing current conditions and identifying long-range goals and objectives and then creating, um, im- implementation strategies to achieve those goals and objectives. Um, they usually include a future land use plan, a transportation and thoroughfare plan, and a parks and community facilities plan. Uh, for Nacogdoches in particular, uh, this plan is also proposed to include an element that would, uh, provide a more in-depth study for the proposed I sixty-nine corridor, which would include more specific future land use, utility, and design suggestions. The downtown master plan creates a vision for downtown Nacogdoches, including building facades, streetscapes, pedestrian access parking, and other public amenities. Uh, this plan would act as a framework for future ordinances and initiatives, um, including coordinated strategies to help reinvigorate the downtown area and make it an attractive place to live, work, and play. Uh, this plan usually also includes a market analysis to, um, identify new retail, entertainment, and housing and then identify, um, any kind of gaps or new retail and housing that might be needed in the future years. Uh, there was a comprehensive design plan for the downtown area, but it was last completed in nineteen ninety-eight, so it is in need of an update. The drainage C I P plan is just like it sounds, uh, it identifies areas in need of drainage improvements and proposes capital drainage projects to address, uh, drainage issues throughout the city. And, uh, we currently don't have, um, a plan like this adopted for Nacogdoches. The Hazard Mitigation Action Plan, um, identifies potential hazards to the city. Uh, these usually include natural disasters such as drought, flood, tornado, wildfire, uh, and severe weather. And the purpose is to propose action that the city can take to reduce or counter the impacts of future occurrences of these types of disasters. Uh, this plan is required for several emergency management grants from the state of Texas and the federal government. Um, and the Hazard Mitigation Action Plan was last updated in twenty fourteen. But again, it's one of those plans that has to be updated regularly just to, uh, maintain our qualification for state and federal funding. A fiscal study and strategy, uh, this reviews the city of Nacogdoches funds and proposes strategies to reduce intergovernmental transfers and identify funding for capital and economic development opportunities. And again, uh, this is one of the studies that we currently don't have on the books. And essentially, it's trying to be more fiscally and resource, um, aware and just trying to make sure that we are, uh, utilizing our resources effectively. Uh, the housing needs study, uh, reviews current housing stock for both single-family and multifamily and projects housing needs for near and long-term growth. Uh, this information can be used to identify housing issues and solutions that then, that can then be turned into, uh, strategic decisions related to, um, improvements to the local housing market. These types of assessments are, um, common used as a basis for securing, uh, financing for various housing programs and projects. Um, and they can also help create policies and in- initiatives to fill housing gaps, um, through incentives and catalyst projects. There was a affordable housing needs, um, study that was done in two thousand and eight, um, but then there was no comprehensive housing study followed up after that. The Unified Development Code is essentially combining the various city, uh, development standards. It includes the zoning ordinance, sign ordinance, and subdivision ordinance. And it combines these into one document to, uh, reduce conflicting language and then modernize the development standards. Um, our subdivision ordinance was adopted in nineteen seventy, but has only received minor revisions since then. Uh, the zoning ordinance was, uh, updated nineteen ninety-eight, but again, we've just done kind of minor revisions along the way as necessary. And then the current sign ordinance was adopted in two thousand and five, uh, with, again, just minor revisions, um, since then. The multimodal transportation plan is a plan intended to expand travel choices for re- residents, businesses, and visitors, uh, by facilitating multiple modes of transportation. So this includes driving, biking, walking, and transit. Uh, this is done by identifying and prioritizing transportation corridors for non-vehicular access. And then usually proposes projects and improvements and design standards to help, um, facilitate those goals. Uh, these plans may also identify strategies to help ensure that the city's transportation investments are also complementing our land use and economic development strategies. Small area plans are kind of like a comprehensive plan, but on a much smaller scale. They provide detailed long-range plans for specific, uh, neighbor- neighborhood-sized areas. They typically provide residential, uh, they typically include residential neighborhoods. But they can also include commercial and mixed-use areas that may be experiencing rapid change or areas that the city has identified for targeted economic investment. And they want to create a, um, vision and strategic plan to market the area further. Uh, these plans also include, uh, projected projects to, um, create a catalyst for, for development. So they could improve, or they can include C I P projects and additional market analysis. Uh, the retail study utilizes cell phone data, uh, that will identify a true market area of the city and identify retail li- uh, leakages to inform future retail recruitment efforts. Um, the most recent retail leakage, leakage and market area study was performed in tw- in two thousand and thirteen. Our Economic Development Department recommends completing this particular study after we really see the true impacts of the, uh, COVID nineteen on our, our retail market. And then there's just various economic development oppo- opportunities. This is really a catch-all, uh, to cover types of studies that include, or, or that could include design workshops for vacant downtown buildings, um, or additional economic impact studies for potential business expansion and locations. All right, so this is the Plans and Policies Matrix that has the expanded, uh, cost estimates and the timelines. We did break it down into two slides. So this first one includes the plans and studies that are funded and underway with working timelines. And these include the fire station study, the, uh, return on investment study, and the water and sewer master plan. Uh, the city's total investment for these studies to date is two hundred and eighteen thousand dollars and with fifty thousand dollars funded in the twenty nineteen, twenty twenty fiscal year. The next slide includes the plans and studies that have not been funded or approved. Um, these are the plans that we, uh, created or listed working with other city, city departments. Uh, we put together a preliminary timeline with estimates for discussion purposes, but these are just estimates, none of these have been, um, vetted or, uh, received R F Qs or R F Ps for, so they are just estimates, so they could be subject to change. Um, now, just by the nature of these plans, some of these plans would need to be, be completed prior to others. So for instance, uh, the comprehensive plan is kind of the foundation, uh, that lays the groundwork for a future housing needs to study. Um, sorry, a future housing need study, um, or an update in Unified Development Code, um, and things of that nature. So when you see the list of the plans, it's not necessarily a list of priority, more of this, uh, sequence of how these plans mu- might play out over time. Um, and based on the prelim- preliminary timeline and cost estimates, the total funding to complete all of the proposed plans over the next three years would be right at, uh, seven hundred and ninety thousand dollars with five hundred and forty of that could pu- which could be possibly funded, uh, this fiscal year with our current balance. And you, you'll hear a report la- later this evening from Finney as to talk about, uh, where, where we are as far as, um, that update. And I'm sure she'll go into more detail, um, on that. And again, these are just preliminary tim- timelines for discussion purposes. So to summarize, these plans and studies, uh, have been on some of staff's wish lists for quite some time. Uh, and this presentation is the first step in beginning the conversation with council about bringing some of these forward. Uh, we do understand that this is a lot of information and I went through it quickly because I know you guys have a long agenda. Um, and we know that you'll have plenty of questions, which we are excited to hear, but tonight we won't be asking for any. But tonight, we won't be asking for any action or necessarily any specific direction. We just wanted to open it up for questions from council, and then hopefully bring this back next month to have some additional dialogue and perhaps some direction at that time. So with that, I'll conclude my presentation and open up for any questions.
I have a wealth of questions, which I will not worry you with tonight. I'll do that separately from the meeting. I love the concept of updating all of these plans and updating the overall master plan sort of as a result. And that's something that, in my mind, is long overdue, almost 20 years since the previous one is an awfully long time, and things have changed a lot during that time. So I am very much in favor of doing all of these plan updates, but no particular questions right now.
Okay, thank you.
It wasn't clear to me, on the comprehensive plan, is that redoing the entire one or sort of focusing it on particular chapters the way that we had done in a work session last year?
This would be, well, it could be a number of things. It could be more of a comprehensive plan appraisal and evaluation report where we tackle certain sections or chapters and focus on those. The more components of the plan that you update, of course, the more expensive that it gets. And so typically, what you see in these types of updates are the transportation section, the land use section, and utility section. And then these are updated and informed with current demographic information, a lot of community outreach and engagement, which is why you see that 12- to 16-month timeline because it's very community engagement-heavy. But this can include the entire comprehensive plan. This can include just various sections or chapters. The cost estimate that we provided in the timeline really is just those key components, your transportation plan, your future land use plan, and then perhaps even your utility or housing section. But I know there's other plans and studies that we proposed that could incorporate utilities and drainage and things of that sort. So to answer your question, the proposal that we've presented tonight would just be sections. It wouldn't be the entire overhaul. It would just be more of an appraisal report and then update.
Okay, yeah, because I mean, I know that it is almost 20 years old, but I don't think that we should go ahead and assume that we need to redo the entire, entire thing given. I mean, a consideration, of course, is cost, but also there might be some things that are just fine the way that they are. So, thank you. That's the main question I had. I mean, I'm sure that there will be a lot more specific questions as we get a little deeper into each one of these things, but I love the initiative. I like the overall subject matters that were picked out, and I'm excited to get more into it.
Thank you.
Just as a follow-up, I know that the reason we had initially started talking about only redoing sections at a time was because a big part of a strategic plan is the implementation portion. And if you don't have the finances or the capabilities of implementing a lot of things that are decided on and what people want, then it's useless. I mean, it really doesn't. It ends up being more of a guide than a true plan. And so I think that's where council was with, you know, deciding of trying to decide which sections to do first, and then, you know, following through. And then when you get finished, it's time to go back and start again with the new ones. So, Mr. Bolden?
The study plan for housing, you have for 2021 and 2022?
Yes, sir.
During our chamber meetings on Tuesdays, I was surprised to hear that housing was one of the number-one. I always thought it was maybe school district kept other businesses from coming to Nakadocas. But in these meetings, it's been stated that housing was the most number-one need for businesses to come to Nakadocas area, county, et cetera. And we have that study pushed out 2021, 2022. I think we need to look at that earlier than that timeframe.
Okay, which, and again, this is a very flexible preliminary timeline. I think the reason that we placed it, you know, later than some of the other plans is because the comprehensive plan also includes that land use element that really, not dictates, but is a guide for where your housing should go. And so it's important to do a housing need study, but I think a component of that is knowing where we actually want the housing first. And so that's something that could be done, I think, immediately after a comprehensive plan update. But I think it would be benefited from doing that long-range evaluation first. But, you know, the housing need study, we could do that next week, or not next week, but that is certainly something that could be pitched up on the list if it was a priority of council to go ahead and pursue that.
That should be all part of our economic plan, housing. My understanding is critical in the Nakadocas area, the need for housing. The comprehensive plan, looking at other cities, their list is just as long as ours, with a lot of the sections haven't had any work done on it whatsoever, but some has, some completed. But most of cities, they focus on like maybe 10 sections that they worked on and looked on and funded. And it was done quicker instead of having, you know, maybe 30 sections that they was looking at and citizens. But all of this was citizens and city engagement. It wasn't just, you know, the city decided this is where we're going to take a look at. It was always citizen and a city engagement in that area. So maybe we focus on maybe out of 30. That's a contrarian number. I don't know why I said 30, but if we just focus on maybe 10, and then fund those and Oh, well, I already asked about. When we update the comprehensive plan, I mean, we are going to include the citizens of Nakadocas.
Yeah, yes, sir. One of the reasons that that plan takes so much time is because it is very heavy on the community engagement because you first have to identify the goals and objectives and priorities of the community. And you can't do that without that public engagement. And because it's been so long, our demographics are a little bit different, our community leadership is different, so the values and priorities of our community are not what they were in 2003. And so that's really the first thing is establishing that. And then everything stems from that unified vision, goals, objectives, and priorities of the community. So you're absolutely right.
I don't know if this part of, but create an incentive for redevelopment and encourage investment in our community from within, but also make it easy for interested businesses and developments to come to Nakadocas. Incentive for redevelopment within our own district area and city communities. I think we ought to push that issue.
Yes, and...
That may be an economic development issue.
Well, I think infill and redevelopment, neighborhood revitalization can be a component of several of these plans. The comprehensive plan does have a housing component. And then the housing need study can actually be used as a basis for funding for future programs and housing policy, and can be used to create strategies for specific areas. And so when we talk about the housing need study and some of these smaller, small-area plans, those are actually geared specifically to evaluate a smaller geographic area in detail and come up with strategies for redevelopment, for infill. Maybe it may require some city intervention or catalyst projects, but those elements can very easily be incorporated into a lot of the elements of these various plans and studies, or can be its own standalone. And we could research some additional plans that would specifically target those objectives, if you like.
Thank you.
We're going to be busy reading studies. I like it. It does seem like a lot of studies, but I absolutely appreciate how they're interwoven and they're dependent on each other. So just as an example, the fire station study that we've got rolling, we need to know what areas of town we're going to be growing toward for that really to be effective. But same thing with the land use and so on. Like, we've got to be able to cast a milestone, throw a marker out there to know, are we going to be in 25 years, are we going to be a community of 35,000 people, or are we going to be a community of 50,000 or 75,000 or 80,000? And where could we possibly practically fit that in? So I appreciate that it is an awful lot of money, but it's pretty critical, I think, that we begin moving these balls forward. And so I appreciate the effort on this, and I appreciate that it's not super simple and clear, we just do one study a year. But, yeah, no real questions, just eager to indeed get the ball rolling. And I'll be curious to kind of get into the comprehensive plan because I see where that does indeed serve as the foundation. Which pieces do we start with? There are going to be some of those that are going to touch the drainage, that are going to touch the downtown, that are going to touch the hazard mitigation. It's going to be pretty critical that we make sure we move that forward if it needs to be updated on. And so I think that's, yeah, nothing else. That's good.
Okay, great. Thank you. Thank you very much. We will move to number six, our open forum. Did we have anyone sign up for that?
No, ma'am.
Okay. Number seven is our consent agenda. If council wants to remove something for discussion, if not, chair would entertain a motion for approval.
Mayor, I wanted to remove item C. I just, I have a question about the two-year contract with Hillco Partners.
Do you just need a question answered? Do you want to have a little bit of discussion about it?
I just have a question that I would like answered. I mean, outside of the question, I don't have a particular problem with it. So if you want, I can just, I can go ahead and ask it.
Yes, let's go ahead and do that. Let's get our city manager up here, and you go right ahead and ask your question.
Okay. Is he up there? I can't see. The plans thing is still on my screen, so I can't see.
Yes, he is here.
Okay, hey, Mari. My question is, given the proposed bills in the Texas Legislature putting a ban on cities lobbying, how would that affect this contractor? Would he be on the hook for $120,000 if it turns out that they can't do any lobbying work for us?
Right. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Well, so far, right now, the bills are just pre-session bills that have been filed, so the session has not actually convened. So we're not quite sure what the outcome of those bills will be, if any. But typically, what you have in any contract, you have a non-appropriation clause in your contract. So if those issues do become law and they cannot perform legally because it's outlawed, then we would just, council would just invoke its non-appropriation clause, and we should be able to terminate with cause. Or terminate, I guess, probably for cause or even convenience, more than likely. I see the city attorney squirming, so I probably completely derailed us here.
Not at all. Matter of fact, you wrote, Mark, I just couldn't stand it. I wanted to come talk. But essentially, if one of those bills prevails, and this was deemed not to be a legal practice, then it would indeed be void due to illegality, and therefore, we would have no obligation to go forward with it or continue with that contract.
Thank you. That answers my question. I don't have any more problems with it.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Thank you.
So then, does someone want to make a motion for the consent agenda?
I'd make a motion to approve the consent agenda as it is written.
I'll second.
Okay, moved and seconded. If no further discussion, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none, motion passes. And our regular agenda, item A is a public hearing. Consider a request for approval of a development plan for a senior center. Let's see, and that is Elena Shapin again. Hello?
Hi, thank you. All right. Do you mind?
All right, well, while we're waiting for the presentation, I'll go ahead and get started. So as a reminder, well, to restate, this is a request for approval of a development plan for a senior center in an established planned development district, which is the Austin Hill subdivision. Our PD development, our PD plan development process does include a three-step approval process. The first step is the concept plan, which establishes the guidelines for the district and outlines general land uses and intensities, and outlines the boundaries of the district. The second phase is the development plan that contains all the information of the concept plan, but includes more detailed information as to the specific location for those land uses, including building, landscaping, and parking. And the purpose of the development plan is to ensure that the project is moving forward consistent with the concept plan approved by council. The final step is the actual PD site plan that is permitted for construction, and that is reviewed and approved by the Planning and Zoning Commission. So just to remind the council, there are three steps. The PD concept plan that establishes the district, the development plan, which is more of a preliminary plan that more clearly defines how those land uses are going to be laid out on the property, and then the final site plan approval that goes before our planning and zoning commission. So this is the second step, the PD development plan. The original PD concept and development plan for the Austin Hill subdivision was approved in 2004, with the primary use being a single-family subdivision. And those uses also included a church and a future assisted living and nursing facility.
If we can't do that pretty quick, we could move on to another agenda item and come back to this.
Let's do that because I do want to have the concept plan and development plan up on the screen whenever we're talking about the different changes that are being made, as well as the notification map in some of the surrounding areas. So... as well as the notification map in some of the surrounding areas. So with that, Mayor, if you'd like to.
Okay. Let's go ahead and move to B, and we will try to come back to that as soon as, they'll let me know as soon as they get that. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
So let's move to B, a presentation of your end financial recap for 2019 and '20. Good evening, Pam Kerbo. How are you?
Good. How are you?
Doing well, thanks.
I had to take off my mask so I can put on my glasses. Unfortunately, I can't do them both. How are y'all this evening?
Doing well.
Have a little bit of good news for y'all this evening. This is a little bit late in the fiscal year to be doing a year-end recap for September. We don't normally do this, but this year I thought it was important for y'all to understand how we ended last year prior to the audit being presented, only because of the impact, or maybe in our case, a little bit of lack of the impact of the pandemic on the city's finances. So tonight, I was just kind of basically going to take a broad 30,000-foot view of where we ended the year on our major funds, as far as revenues and expenditures, and kind of the effect of that. Starting with, oh, okay, there we go. So, yeah, you can go ahead and flip over. Yeah. So, starting with our general fund, we're going to look at our major revenues for the year. Property taxes came in, of course. They are set to always come in pretty close to 100%. This year, we were somewhat lucky in the fact that the pandemic actually hit after most property taxes had been paid for the fiscal year. And so there was not an impact on that. Had that been a couple of months earlier, we could have seen some folks that had to postpone making those payments for a few months. And so that did not affect us this past year. Sales tax, if you'll notice, we were up almost 7% on the year, which is kind of surprising in the year of, you know, a pandemic and the city, I mean, the state seeing a lot of sales tax hits across the board. We actually were up about $455,000 over budget due to a couple of things. Our budget was pretty conservative. We basically budgeted for like a 1% increase over the prior year, but we had a couple of large audit adjustments this year, and so that helped to the tune of a couple of hundred thousand dollars. And we only had a couple of months that we actually saw a decrease. We started, the pickup happened very soon for us. If you'll recall, I think in the monthly emails that I send y'all regarding sales tax, we have seen several areas, especially in retail home improvement during the pandemic, that saw double-digit increases. And so things were a little bit of anomaly for us, but we did in the year picking up a good chunk of money in the sales tax area. Franchised fees came in pretty much on target for our budget. I think, let's see, we're going to talk about it in a little bit. They actually were down as to what we had seen in the prior year, but we'll explain that in just a little bit more. Court fines, of course, were down significantly. The court was shut down for a few weeks. And then patrol department was actually, the traffic division, I'm sorry, was disabled for a while. And so, you know, consequently, court fines were down significantly for this fiscal year. Other revenues, of course, they were up significantly. That happens to be, one major part of that is building permits. We were up a couple of hundred thousand dollars in building permits. We had several big building permits issued this year, not only NISD for all of their bond improvements, Dr. Klein. We had several big, big commercial building permits issued this year. And transfers, of course, they are budgeted right at 100%. So at the end of the year, we actually ended up picking up about half of a million dollars in revenues over what we had anticipated in the general fund. Part of that, of course, is the first 20% allocation of the CARES money. So at the end of the day, when you pull that 370,000 out, we still were up about $150,000 over what we had budgeted. So in a pandemic year, I think that's pretty awesome for us. If you go ahead and jump to the next, I guess I can do this. Okay, all right. So taking a look at how we actually ended on each of these items, property taxes, we were up 8% over the year, the prior year. If y'all recall, last year, we increased the property tax rate by the eight, almost, it was like 7.99%. And so that is exactly what we anticipated. Sales tax ended up being up 322,000 over the prior year. Franchise fees were down $107,000 from the prior year. This is what I was speaking to earlier. There was a law change this year, and so now if a company has both internet and telecom franchise fees due, they only pay one now. They used to have to pay two, and so the law changed. So that did affect us over the prior year. We knew that law was coming, so the budget was not as impacted. We ended up making budget, but from comparing to prior year, we were down. Of course, building permit fees were up 375% over the prior year. And like I said, those were some of the bigger items that we had going on, construction in town. Fines, of course, were down 223,000 over the prior year, but overall, revenues were up $468,000 from the prior year. Of course, part of that is the CARES money. On the expenditure side, we were within expectations at 93% general fund-wide, which equated to about $1.7 million in budgeted expenditures that we did not spend for a variety of things. Unfilled positions, we always save some money there. This year, we saved a lot of money there. We had, at one point, I believe, the police department was down almost 20% of their personnel. That's extremely a high amount, I think, estimated right at $365,000 worth of police salaries that were unexpended for this prior fiscal year. Recreation, their revenues were down, but their expenditures were as well, because when you don't have basketball, you don't have to pay referees. So we were down about $80,000 in expenses on the recreation side. Of course, we deferred as much as we could during the fiscal year. We had a hiring freeze. We did a travel and training freeze. We postponed anything that was not absolutely necessary. And so at the end of the, at the end of the day, we ended up not spending about $1.7 million of the expenditures. Now, I will be able to give you a pretty good estimate of what our reserves over our requirement are going to be after we finish our year-end carryovers, and those are due to Mario by the end of this month. I do anticipate that our reserves over our standard 25% requirement is going to be close to 4 million, maybe over. That includes the CARES money. So in the spring, when we start the budget cycle, we are going to be sitting down and discussing what you might want to do with some of those one-time expenditures. I know that some of the studies that Elena just spoke of will have, some of these funds could be used to utilize that for some of those studies. So as we get closer to the new budget cycle, we'll give y'all a better understanding of where we are. But for right now, the general fund on the reserve side is looking very, very healthy. On utility and sanitation funds, water and sewer sales were down about 2% this year over prior year collections, which was about $370,000. And the majority of that is just because it was an extremely wet year. And so we have to watch the weather trends with water sales, and this just happened to be a pretty wet year for us. So we were down over prior year collections. Sanitation and landfill, up 1%. That's really kind of flat for us, honestly. Expenditures, again, all utility and sanitation funds together were within 90% to 94% of budget. And there, again, is just because we had kind of put a freeze on mid-year spending and did not fill some of the positions that were open there for a little while. On the hotel tax fund, there's not as much good news here. And I know that during the budget process, we discussed this at length. Hotel taxes compared to prior year collections were down over $189,000 for last fiscal year. Expenditures, pretty much where we anticipated them being. If you'll recall, that was one of the impetus for council voting to do a one-year subsidy for the CVB because their funding does directly come from this hotel tax fund. And so we're monitoring that. After this first quarter, we'll be able to come back to you and let you know kind of what the hotel tax is doing. We're hopeful that it will start to swing up pretty soon. And that is pretty much the recap in an nutshell. If y'all have any questions, I'll be happy to try to answer them.
Mr. Bolden?
I was curious, water and sewer sales. I would have expected that to have been more on the plus side than negative, mainly because more people were at home during this pandemic.
True, but it rained a lot. And so the majority of our big, big water towards the end of the fiscal year is in irrigation. That's where, and then industry is another big user. And so if any of the businesses are shut down, and they were, a lot of our restaurants were at, you know, either closed for a while or at smaller capacity. And so that does affect it as well. Residential usage honestly was not, you know, significantly as impacted as we thought. Unlike you, you would think people, maybe they just were laying on the couch. I don't know.
Garth?
Yes, ma'am. You mentioned the CARES Act. Which figure was that? Like, you mentioned both on the balance sheet, but also revenue. There's been a bunch of numbers that we've had come in and some of the grants.
Sure.
Do you know?
I do. That is, what we actually have received so far is our first 20% initial allocation, which was 370,000. We have not received the big portion yet. We submitted all that paperwork actually yesterday, and so that reimbursement should be coming, hopefully, within the next few months. That was the additional 1.4, I think, million. But yeah, for these numbers, just the $370,000 is all that's included because that's all we've actually had on hand.
Awesome. Okay, that's all. Thank you.
Jay?
No particular questions for me. Thank you for the recap. That's very helpful.
Amelia? Amelia had to step away. She had to leave the meeting. Okay, thank you. Thank you, Pam. Thank you. Appreciate it. Okay, let's return to our public hearing. We're ready to go. And this is the development plan for a senior center.
All right. Thank you, Mayor, Council. All right, so. Yes, this is a slide earlier where I was talking about the approval process for plan development. Let's go to the next one. All right, thank you. So, that's fine, thank you. So the, as I stated earlier, the original concept plan and development plan for the subdivision was approved in 2004. And the area that's subject to tonight's request, you can see it on the left-hand side, includes Lot 1 and Lot 2, was approved for a church and a future assisted living slash nursing facility. And so what you're reviewing tonight is an amendment to that development plan to allow for the conversion of the church to a future senior center, and then Lot 2 serving as an expansion for that facility. So let's go to the next one, please. All right, this concept plan was approved in January earlier this year. And as I stated, it allows for the conversion of the existing church on Lot 1, fronting West Austin Street, to be converted into the senior center. And then Lot 2 behind it, which is currently vacant, is going to accommodate a future addition and outdoor activity area. This plan included a 50-foot building setback and landscape buffer along the eastern boundary of the property that abuts those residential lots to mitigate any kind of negative impacts that the expansion may have on the existing neighborhood. Next slide, please. Thank you. The development plan includes all of the information on the concept plan, but is more detailed and includes more information as to the specific location and boundaries of the land uses and the specific proposed improvements regarding parking and landscaping and building location. This plan illustrates the location of the renovation of the kitchen area that will help facilitate the meal service and preparation as provided by the senior center. It also illustrates two building additions for Phase 2, which will be multipurpose buildings to accommodate future activities associated with a senior center. Could be classrooms. It could be gathering areas, but those buildings will serve the senior center. And then the majority of the lot is planned to be preserved for outdoor recreation area and to preserve a lot of the landscaping to create a scenic outdoor gathering space. All right, next slide, please. Oh, I think we skipped a couple. Oh, you know what? It's because the PowerPoint slides didn't include all of the exhibits because they were duplicated here. But that's fine. So scroll down to the zoning map, please. It's a little out of order. All right, it looks like I'm missing some exhibits, but that's okay. We will wing it. So as I stated, this is an established planned development district. The surrounding property to the south and to the west is zoned agriculture. Agriculture is kind of our default zoning for whenever a property is annexed into the city. It can also be designated for areas that are already being used for agricultural purposes or for areas that have, that are restricted by the lack of access to public infrastructure like water, sewer, and so forth, or so on. This property was annexed back in the 80s. So since then, public infrastructure has been facilitated to that area. So more than likely, those surrounding areas will be developed probably as single-family. The property immediately to the north, across West Austin Street is also zoned planned development district and is developed as a duplex subdivision. The proposed land use is very compatible with the existing residential development in the area, and staff anticipates that it will serve as an amenity to the neighborhood for Austin Hills and to the neighborhood north of West Austin Street. The future land use designates this area as single-family residential, which is described as your conventional one-family detached dwellings. And the comprehensive plan also notes that schools, parks, and community facilities such as a senior center are actually recommended to be located in close proximity or within residential neighborhoods. And so staff finds that the request is compliant with the comprehensive plan. And then the photos that you saw, can we get back to those? There you go. Thank you. These are some site photos that were taken last week. The ones on the upper left-hand and right-hand corner are taken from the street view at West Austin Street and Opal Drive. There was a little bit of elevation difference, and so the property does sit a little bit higher than the street level, but you can see the existing facility on, with photos that are on the bottom. That is a view looking from Opal Street with the primary entrance and then the covered area, which will serve as the future just general public access area for the customers of the senior center. And then the next slide is some photos of the rear of the property. So there aren't any changes being proposed to the current configuration or number of parking spaces. So in generally, in general, this area will remain the same. You see images of the vacant lot to the back that is planned for a future phase, and the senior center is anticipating to preserve a lot of that natural landscape for their outdoor recreation facility. Next slide, please. All right, so the conditions for approval for a planned development, concept and development plan are outlined on your screen. Staff finds that the request does meet the review criteria for PD development plan, and the development plan is consistent with the concept plan that council approved earlier this year. And so based on these findings, staff And so based on these findings, staff does make, recommend approval of the request. Um, next slide, please. Uh, staff sent out 15 notices to property owners within the 200-foot notification area. And these consisted of nine owner-occupied, single-family residences, seven residential vacant lots, two single-family lots that are currently under construction and two duplex lots across West Austin Street. Uh, we didn't receive any contacts regarding the request, however, uh, a resident of the Austin Hill subdivision representing the neighborhood, uh, did attend the planning and zoning commission and city council meeting whenever the concept plan was approved in January. And, uh, when we sent out the notices, we were, we were very clear that this is the next stage in development for the senior center, uh, which is why we have not received any, any contacts regarding the request. So with that, that, that concludes staff's presentation. Um, this item was heard by the planning and zoning commission last night at the regular meeting and they did recommend approval unanimously. And we do have the, um, applicant and the property owner in attendance, uh, if the council has any questions with them.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So this is a public hearing, so I will now open the public hearing and ask if there's anyone here that would like to speak, um, against uh, approval of this development plan. Is there anyone here that wants to speak for? Yes, Army Curtis. Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Army Curtis with Curtis Architecture, uh, here representing the Nacogdoches Senior Center in this project. Um, it's been kind of a long road until the concept plan, but, uh, we are feeling like we have got all of the things figured out. How the kitchen, for example, is going to sit on the land and on the site, how it interacts with the existing facilities of the site. And also looking ahead at the phase two in the back of how, um, their future facilities would work into it. So, uh, we're here for, to answer any questions you might have. And, um, thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else want to speak for the development? Is that Mike Kelly behind that mask? Oh, you've got something on your chin.
Yeah. Um, Mike Kelly, um, the, the chairman of the Nacogdoches Committee on Aging, which operates as the Nacogdoches Senior Center. And I'll keep it very brief. I've been to a lot of city council meetings over the years, but I don't think I've ever been at one that had so much information to be absorbed. Uh, and my, uh, compliments on, on council and staff. Uh, this is a, a, a lot going on here. In fact, a lot of the city planners, uh, presentation brought up a lot of things, uh, related to the senior center. We do have a lot of new leadership in the, in the town with the university. Our senior, a lot of cities, the senior center is a function of, of the city. Uh, typically of the Parks and Recreation Department. Nacogdoches Senior Center was started 40 years ago, uh, by, by the county of Nacogdoches with a, a lot of effort by Herman Chancellor, who had been the county auditor for years. I'm not sure how he leveraged the money because the county budget was very, very poor back then, but in, in 1979, 1980, uh, he formed the Nacogdoches, uh, Committee on Aging in the senior center that we've been in for 40 years on Harris Street. And that is owned by the county of Nacogdoches still. They've, uh, given us the use of the building free of charge for 40 years. So this is a big step for us, stepping out and, and doing this, but we get more and more demand as what they, they call the baby boomers are becoming senior citizens. It's more demand and it's a different demand than what we've had in the past. Uh, more activities, more things to do. It used to be meals on wheels, catfish and Domino's. And that was about all there was to running the senior center. We've got, uh, a lot of, lot of activities now and, and a lot more we'd like to do that we just don't have space to do. You know, this is, this is a $2 million capital improvement that the city doesn't have to pay for. But we ask that you, you, you approve this, but keep us in mind as you, as you look at your comprehensive plan, as you look at your, you know, legislative issues. Uh, we're providing the senior services, but we need to partner with the city and the county. SFA is a tremendous resource for us for interns. Our medical, medical community, uh, supports us, helps us out a lot. This, this is our chance to really have a first-class senior center and offer a lot more programs. And we're, we're ready to go. 2020 has been hard on the senior population. Uh, been hard on everybody, but them in particular. We haven't been able, we still do our meals and wheel, on wheels, and that hasn't, uh, taken a break. But a lot of our congregant meals, a lot of our group activities, which are so important for the social interaction. Uh, what, what we do is a reason for a lot, for a lot of people to get up in the morning. It may be bingo, it may be Domino's, maybe line dancing, Tai Chi. Uh, we, we want to get back to that and we're, we're planning on 2021 being the year we do. So, any, any questions, uh, be glad to answer them.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay. Elena, you want to come back up? And, um, we will start with, uh, Garth. Did you have any, uh, questions?
No, ma'am. No questions. Thank you.
Okay. Of course. Jay?
Um, my, my only question had been addressed and that was just a, a concern with the, the setback issue on lot two, but that's already been addressed. So, um, I'm, I'm very, I'm sad to see the senior center leave my neighborhood ultimately, but, uh, I'm really excited to see what's going to happen with it.
Roy?
I'm a senior citizen. I'm happy.
Okay. Well, that's great. Um, so if, um, did I close the public hearing? Public hearing's closed. Cause there was, I did not ask if there was anyone else that wanted to speak for though. I apologize. Okay. Thank you. So, uh, chair will, uh, entertain a motion, a motion for approval of the development plan.
What is that, agenda item 9B?
Uh, 9A.
9A. I make a motion to approve, uh, agenda item 9A as it is written.
I'll second.
Moved and seconded that we approve agenda item 9A as it is written. If there's no further discussion, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, gentlemen, very much. Appreciate all you do. And now we will move to agenda item C, consider adoption of the proposed compensation plan and budget amendments for the 19 pay periods in the current fiscal year impacted by the salary adjustments. Pam Carbo. Thank you, Elena. Appreciate it.
Mayor, Council, um, if you'll recall at the last council meeting, um, we discussed and presented the, um, compensation plan that, um, both the city staff and the, um, consultant had prepared. Um, as a, as just a brief little overview, this is, this is going to allow the city to actually have a true pay scale system that we have not had in the past. Um, it will open up and allow for, for employees that have tenure to be able to continue to work through their, their career path here at the city. And, um, currently, as you'll recall, I think at year 10, um, you, you max out on what you can, you can make in your, your chosen field. Um, this is going to open that up for, for our employees so that going forward, um, we will be transitioning to a merit-based system. And so that each year during the evaluation process, um, they will be eligible, um, if, if they have performed, um, to receive a merit pay increase. That will take them above and beyond where they were limited in the past to just a 10-year, 10-year, um, salary. Um, as, as a reminder, we built into the budget some funding for this, um, in anticipation of, of getting some final numbers. In the general fund, we had budgeted $400,000. We, um, actually have, after we gone through and I, I think we discussed, um, some options that we added after, um, the budget um, presentation last year, we, we implemented, um, the, um, minimum wage of 1270. That was not something that we had included. Um, when we were discussing, uh, the original numbers, um, we actually went in and, and pulled, um, firefighters and police officers and, um, are going to propose that we pay them, um, above the market minimum. Um, so those were some things that were not included when we, when we, um, did our estimates for the budget. Um, in order for this to, um, to be implemented, we're, we're going to do this hopefully, um, January 1. And so for a 19 pay periods is what will be left in the fiscal year. Um, the general fund will, um, require $537,390. Um, one thing that we have discussed, um, at, at length with, with the police chief and, and myself and, and Stephen and H R and Mario and city manager's office, um, is the need for us to, to hold open, um, three of our patrol officer positions, um, for the remainder of this fiscal year in order to, to fund this so that we do not have to increase appropriations for this, this fiscal year. As you'll recall, we have had a, a number of open positions there. Um, they're filling them as they can. Um, the police chief, um, has, has assured us that this will not be an issue for the remainder of the fiscal year. Same thing in the utility fund. Um, we had budgeted $100,000. Um, we actually had done some, some shifting of, of employees there. And so we were way over in our, um, estimates of what that was going to be. A lot of those positions came in closer to market than, than we had anticipated. And so the proposed salary adjustments, um, is $45,050 there. So there will be no need in, in increasing the appropriation there as well. Same thing with sanitation fund. Um, we had budgeted 25,000. The proposed salary adjustments are 21,950. So there will be no need in a, an increase there. You'd, um, oh, I'm sorry. That says utility fund. That should say airport FBO fund, um, for the 5,000. Budgeted in 2021, we had budgeted 5,000 at the airport. Um, and those proposed salary adjustments came in at 5,800. So here will be the only area in the budget that we will request an increase in appropriation. That will be for the $800. And that again is for the airport FBO fund. Um, the, the budget amendment, um, will still be very detailed because we, we included each of those lump sums in a one-line item. Um, and now we will need to, to item, transfer those to each of the individual departments. Um, and so the, that is the need for the budget amendment tonight. Just as a reminder, the annual plan cost for this pay plan implementation for the 2021, um, for the 21, for the full year, if we were implementing for the full year of 2021, are as follows. Um, general fund was 732,925, utility fund 53,950, sanitation 29,2, and the airport was 78, um, 25. So an annual cost for this, for this fiscal year was 823. Since we are implementing in January 1, it's only 19 of the 26 pay periods. And so that is why, um, the actual budget amendment is, is going to be less than the actual, um, um, plan cost here. So as, as a wrap-up, um, like I said, we, the, the, um, adoption of the pay plan and the structure, um, will be accomplished with the adoption of this budget amendment tonight. This will be effective on 12/26, which is the beginning of the pay period with a pay date of January the 15th. So if this is adopted tonight, this will go into effect and all the employees will see that increase on the January 15th, 21 paycheck. Once this plan is implemented, then going forward each year, ne- ne- next year and, and thereafter, um, we will have, like I said, a merit-based system for performance, um, and so that employees can move within this, this pay plan. I know we had talked about a little bit, um, in the last meeting, um, going forward, some items that y'all might want to, to address. Um, you know, an, an increase in the, the minimum wage again, uh, incrementally over time. And so, um, as we move through the budget process next year, those will be things that will be coming back to you. Um, and, and presenting even further things that we can do to enhance this pay plan as it's, as it's, um, adopted. If you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer them.
Okay. Uh, let's start with Jay.
Um, I guess my primary question is when, when, you know, assuming that this plan is implemented, um, when it is implemented, will people who are, are, who are sort of currently tenured be receiving sort of a, an equal percentage or an equal amount pay raise as compared to those who would be starting?
So, so the way.
Position.
Right. So the way that the, the, this is structured is we are transitioning people from their current base pay and their step pay. So we're combining that and then we are moving them into the new pay system on a level that guarantees them, I think we, we talked about this the last time, the $500 overall budgetary increase. So basically what we're doing is we are getting everybody to market minimum plus the 500 if that's, if that's what it takes to get them there. So yes, you're going to have some tenure issues. Now the only areas that that is, that is addressed is in firefighters and police officers. Um, we did, um, we did have a, a implementation plan based on years of service so that you don't have um, that issue in those particular two areas. Citywide, you, we, we didn't want compression where you had a brand-new police officer and a 30-year police officer at the same level. And so because our police officers were significantly under, under the market minimum, that was what was going to happen. And so with, there are, there are positions across the city that that is going to be an issue. Um, and that's one of those things that, you know, I think we've, we've had a lot of really good, um, feedback from, from employees that are very excited about this. Um, that is a concern. Um, but the, the thing that this, the beauty of this process and this plan is that most of those people are maxed out at their 10 years or their 12 or 14 or 15. There's no hope right now for more money. With this plan, there is. Right, right.
And yeah, that, I, I understand that's going to be a little bit of a teething.
Yeah. It is, it is. Um, it was just what, what, what we could afford to start. And then those will be issues that we can address as we go forward and with the plan.
Great. Thank you.
No question.
Garth?
Pam, how close are we to having the full merit-based, uh, scale set up for every department where it's based on KPIs or performance? I mean, I appreciate that is a massive undertaking. Is that, we're pretty close on or we have, uh, the rough idea of it?
I'm going to let Stephen. I'm going to let Stephen address that since that, that's an H R issue.
Hello, Garth.
Hey.
Um, yes, I, I've already reached out to a consultant that we're going to look to come in and, and, uh, and talk to us and help us, uh, prepare, put these plans together. Um, and it's going to be different for each department. I mean, uh, one of the things that public safety has looked at, police and fire, they would like to get a lot together with the consultant, kind of work out how that's going to be, um, for their departments. But, um, it, yes, starting stages are, are already starting now. Those conversations are begin, um, getting on the phone with a consultant who has his past experience in this. And kind of we're, we're starting from the beginning of this, um, with the pay plan, if adopted tonight, and getting everything set in place. Um, so we're ready for that, um, for next budget year.
Awesome. It, it's a big undertaking. I appreciate that. I, I was, I'm glad you brought in the consultant for that. Not that we've got 50 consultants coming in now, but gosh, that is a huge ordeal. So I, I appreciate what you've got on your plate. And I'm grateful we can have some, some help there because doing this well, the merit-based, uh, pay will be fantastic, I think.
Yes, sir. It, it is new to us and it's going to be a learning process and, uh, we're looking forward for that, uh, next step.
Thank you, Stephen.
Yes, sir.
Thanks. Um, okay. So if there are no further questions, uh, for Pam, then the chair would entertain, uh, a motion to, uh, adopt the proposed, uh, plan.
I'll make the motion to adopt, adoption of the proposed compensation plan and budget amendment for the 19 pay periods in the current fiscal year impacted by the salary adjustments.
I'll second that.
Okay. Uh, it's been moved and seconded that we consider adoption of the proposed, that we adopt the proposed compensation plan and budget amendments for the 19 pay periods in the current fiscal year impacted by the salary adjustments. Uh, if no further discussion, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 Anyone opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. And now you may come back and talk about agenda item D.
Before I do that, I, I want to thank you all very much for that, um, adoption of that, um, pay plan. I think every, I speak, I know I speak for every employee here. It is very, very much appreciated and we are excited and I hope that you. And we are excited and I hope that you see um even more out of, out of your employees. Because I think, I think this is going to be a, a um, a great thing for the employees and I think they're going to value it. And I think you will see a difference um in, in the output of work, I hope, so, thank you very much. Um, on the next item, um, this is a request from Nacogdoches Independent School District. Um, for a allocation of one hundred thousand dollars to assist them. With some technology expenditures that they had earlier this year due to COVID. Um, this is an item that um. The Texas Education Agency actually made a, an effort to um assist all the ISDs across the state. In um, in presenting a, a proposal to both cities and counties around the state. In order to utilize some of the CARES funds that the, that the governments received. In order to assist these ISDs with this extremely expensive um proposal. Um, this is an item that of course, um, is definitely something that, that is um allocated under the, the CARES Act funding. Now, uh, keep in mind that the city of Nacogdoches, we far exceeded our one point eight million dollar allocation. With um public safety salaries alone. And so um, that is exactly what we submitted to um the Texas Division of Emergency Management for reimbursement. Was fire and police um salaries and so that money is that, those were our expenditures. So those funds, once we receive them, um, can be utilized um in, in such a way that the, that the city council so provides. So um, this of course is something that is, is um probably a extremely necessary item for, for the ISDs. I'm not sure if, if you had a chance to really kind of look at what the, what the uh T E A had proposed. But um, they basically were able to, to buy millions of dollars worth of, of laptops and Wi-Fi units. So that there's, the school district could go to a virtual um situation. Um, I, I'm afraid we're not out of that woods yet, I feel like we're going to be going back virtual at some point. They have the equipment now to do that and so, uh, I know the city was instrumental in, in um helping them get Dragon Connected set up. And, and y'all, y'all um agreed to, to allow us to do some, some um Wi-Fi plus points for them and, and spend some of that money. This is just an additional item that, that they need to help offset the cost of some of those unfunded um items that they had to have. So, um, if you have any questions, I'll be happy.
Thank you, uh, Mr. Bolden.
Oh, no question, I, I mean, reading everything of, about the school district, I consider it's something that's needed.
Absolutely, you can do it, no, I agree. Um, Garth, you have any questions?
Similar, no, no questions, thank you.
Uh, Jay.
Uh, no particular questions, I, I know, you know, a hundred thousand dollars sounds like a lot of money, but that is a drop in the bucket for what it has cost. This school district and, and all of the others to, to make this happen. So I'm very much in favor of giving them that, that little bit of help.
Okay, so the chair would entertain a motion for the approval of that expenditure.
Well, move that we approve agenda item nine, is that D, um, as written.
I'll second.
Moved and seconded, we approve agenda item number nine D as written. I have no further discussion, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed, motion passes, thank you Pam. Uh, E, consider an ordinance of the city of Nacogdoches for conveyance of land, Jeff Davis. I'm not gonna read that whole thing. I'm gonna time you.
Good evening, Mayor, council members, I am Jeff Davis, city attorney. Um, agenda item nine E before you at this time uh marks the successful completion. Of a twenty year economic development um project that is now uh, is now close to completion. Uh, just a very brief history, back in the mid nineties, uh, the city entered into a, uh, an agreement with the state. Uh, for a Texas capital fund contract. Um, the purpose of that contract was to further economic development in order to. Uh, retain, expand job opportunities in the city of Nacogdoches and the Nacogdoches area. Um, as a result of that, in nineteen ninety seven, uh, the city and Pilgrims Pride Corporation entered into what was known as. Or is known as a community and business agreement for real estate improvements. And the purpose was of, of that agreement was to assist Pilgrims Pride. Uh, in the construction of improvements at their facility using those Texas capital fund uh monies. Through that contract that we had with the state. Um, interestingly enough, and I don't know if you realize, uh, have, have realized this, but the city. Um, you have owned point two one two acres in the middle of the complex here at the Pilgrims Pride plant. Um, here in Nacogdoches. Uh, the purpose for that was under that agreement that was entered into in nineteen ninety seven. With Pilgrims Pride for the expansion of their facilities, uh, creating additional job opportunities. And there was constructed on that uh two tenths of an acre. Uh, was, is known as a spiral freezer and I have absolutely no idea what a spiral freezer looks like, does or is, but, but we constructed one. Uh, the cost of that was somewhere in the neighborhood of one point six million dollars. Uh, that was satisfied or that was paid for um by a grant of one point four five million dollars. From this ta- Texas capital fund uh program. And so that was completed in two thousand, at that time, the city owned that uh two tenths of an acre. Uh, upon which the spiral freezer was, was constructed and so the city uh entered into another agreement with Pilgrims Pride. And it was a lease and grant repayment agreement, now that agreement uh was for twenty years. Uh, we entered into that back in two thousand and uh the various provisions of that provided that. Pilgrims would make monthly payments to the city of Nacogdoches in the amount of six thousand forty one dollars and sixty seven cents. Uh, the city received those monies and then we promptly turned around every month and then we, we uh remitted that to the state. Uh, to satisfy that grant and so lo these two hundred forty months that has taken place religiously. Um, I would be remiss if I did not uh recognize or say a quick word of thanks to Pam Carbo and the finance. Um, uh, department, her, her department has done a fantastic job of administering this every month for the last twenty years. Accounting for every penny of that. So under that agreement, that lease agreement and grant repayment agreement with Pilgrims Pride. Upon uh the final payment after two hundred and forty of these payments. If Pilgrims uh made, exercised an option for repurchase and provided proper notice to the city. Then they were entitled to, to repurchase this two tenths of an acre. Um, and they could do that for the one point four five million, uh, but it was an eroding thing. So if they satisfied all those payments, then, then at the end of the day, it came to one million four hundred fifty thousand dollars even. Um, and under that, then we would reconvey under a special warranty deed, that, that property back to Pilgrims, thus satisfying the program. Um, there were things that had to be checked, Ms. Carbo and her department did a wonderful job of that. Um, and in uh satisfaction of this, it, they, they realized that there was two dollars and forty. Cent shy of making the one point four five million and that's because over the last twenty years. There was a little accounting area, area by Pilgrims and they paid one penny less than they were supposed to pay. So that's where the two dollars and forty cents came from, Pam and her folks got all that uh lined out. Pilgrims wrote a check for two dollars and forty cents and so now we are complete. Um, and, and, and that's a wonderful thing and it has been a great benefit for our community and, and provided additional job opportunities. So it's been very successful. Um, what you have before you at this time is um an actual ordinance. Um, and we have an ordinance for the conveyance of this because the Texas local code says that's how we're supposed to go about such things. So um, if approved tonight, the ordinance would authorize the mayor. Uh, to execute the necessary documentation to reconvey the two tenths of an acre back to Pilgrims Pride. And that would be in the form of a special warranty deed. Mayor, that would conclude my presentation, I'll, I'll certainly set, step aside if there's any comments to be made. I'll answer any questions to the best of my abilities afterwards.
Sure, uh, Garth, let's start with you, you have any questions?
No, ma'am, thank you.
Okay, uh, Jay.
No, no questions, thank you.
And Roy?
No question.
Okay, great, thank you so much.
Thank you, Mayor.
So now, uh, we'll entertain a motion uh to consider this ordinance. For approval.
Oh, that, uh, this is item, agenda item ninety?
Yes, sir.
I, I make a motion to approve the ordinance of the city of Nacogdoches for the conveyance of. Point two one two acres of land, more or less, to Pilgrims Pride Corporation. Authorizing the mayor to execute necessary documents of conveyance.
I'll second.
Okay, moved and seconded that we, I'm, I'm gonna go ahead and say uh agenda item nine E.
Agenda, okay.
And uh, if there's no further discussion, all of those in favor, please say aye.
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 No, and any opposed, passes unanimously, thank you very much. So, it is now seven twenty nine P M and according to Texas Government Code, section five five one dash zero seven four. Council will be going into executive uh session. Pardon me. Where are all my papers?
Would you like me to stay or stick around or?
Uh, yes, you and Jeff, yeah, I need you.
Sorry, stay, Jeff, I said, okay.
Yes, yes, I'm happy for you all to stay.
Me, me too?
Yes, you can stay by default, you gotta stay. This isn't gonna take, I hope, very long. Uh.
Yeah, we're good.
We're good, okay. So, in doing all of the uh, the great job they've done with the salary surveys. One person, um, you know, there, there are three people that are, are hired by the council. And, and that is uh city manager, city attorney and our municipal court judge. And uh, the municipal court judge Heather Watts uh has been here about a year and a half. She's the first lawyer that we have had in that position and uh she came in. To, to um, a system that was functional, but everything was not being done uh correctly. And so that is, and thank goodness, because we had a lawyer that saw that and was able to, to address it. Now Heather was not included on that salary survey. She has also been working two jobs this year and a half, she is the municipal court judge and she has also been serving as the administrat-. What's it called, administrative clerk? Or the.
Court administrator.
Court administrator, court administrator, which has worked well. Um, because of, of how things have been this year. Now, because they've been doing virtual, a lot of uh their business virtually and they will be able to continue to do that. And so there is possibly not the need to ca- to hire that extra person and she is capable of doing those positions. So, um, I have been talking with her and trying to work with her about. Um, trying to come to s- uh, an agreement about a satisfactory salary. And with some assistance from uh Steven and Mario and Jeff. And so currently she has paid fifty four thousand dollars, which is just amazing to me. That we have, have been able to get away with that for, for this long. But, um, what I would like for you uh to know is that. Um, I really think she deserves, she's doing the job of, of what two people used to do, even though it's been, uh, things have been. Um, changed up a little bit, uh, so that it works more, more easily and succinctly. She has developed processes, they are in place, she has two clerks right now, there's another one that is supposed to be hired. And what I would like to do is increase her salary and then have uh a list of expectations. That she will be required to report to council on at least an annual basis. And she and I went over all of those and I, and I shared with her that I would be um talking to you all about them. And so some of those um would be to continue to review the operations, procedures and processes. And that she has set up and the improvements that she's made and make certain that they are implemented. Uh, she will create a hierarchy of her staff, she will um. Also work a little bit closer with our city manager, uh, the new, of course, our law firm that's coming in, but the new city attorney. And with executive staff, because they all can really help each other in a lot of areas. And I think she could uh benefit from that. So you remember last time we had uh the grade of salaries? And there's a grade thirty five that had the assistant public works director and assistant director of finance. And then under that is a grade thirty four where there is no one. And the next grade is thirty three, which, which is our assistant community services director. So I would propose that we put her at grade thirty four. With a salary of, that comes out to eighty one thousand two hundred and seven annually. And I also did not mention that she uh, she collected some of the information but, and Steven did a salary survey. For the position she's doing and they had to do that because this is, of course, we're very unique in Nacogdoches. Um, and uh, so a lot of these uh jobs were combined from some places. So, any of a, the four of us are open to answer any questions you might have. Let's see, we started with Jay last time, Mr. Bolden.
Oh, um, that's eighty one thousand two hundred and seven, that's a base salary for other locations that's doing, providing the same task.
Well, okay, so you have to look at, it's, it is, um, it is a. Yes, it is a good base salary, it, it is a little bit above, you know, um, what the bottom would be. There's nobody that has that actual job in our region.
Okay.
Okay, because of, of the way things are set up and so it's sort of a, a combination of, of, of jobs. She's also an attorney, an experienced attorney and so that is something that, you know, you also take into an, to an account. And so if she starts at that grade thirty five, she's not starting at the bottom of grade thirty five, I mean thirty four, I'm sorry. She is a little bit above that minimum start because of her uh experience and.
And has that experience in municipal court?
Um, did she do that in San Augustine, she didn't do?
She was, she, she has a great deal of experience in that level of court.
Yeah.
Uh, she was, I think, twice elected county attorney in San Augustine County. Uh, Councilman uh, even Bolden and, and so although she's not prior to being appointed to be just the judge, being the judge. She's worked with that level of court, she has a lot of experience in, in working with those courts.
Being a county attorney?
She was county attorney.
Oh, okay, nevermind, I retract my question.
Okay, um, let's see, uh, Garth. Garth, do you have any questions?
Yeah, sorry, it was muted on me there, um. So of, of the different positions that she's currently taking on, is it gonna stay that way? Or when we begin opening back up, will we need to hire someone else? Like, so, so she's got her current role that's defined in her job description, then she's absorbed that second role. Is she gonna, uh, whatever the inverse of absorb, is she gonna push that back out if we get busy again?
That's so, that was my main concern also, so there, there is a job opening right now for another clerk position. And the idea that um, uh, I believe Mario had was to hire someone who could be sort of the lead clerk. And could take some, so that it develops a hierarchy at the office. But um, no, the way she has streamlined it, she can manage both of those roles. And it's good because she's, being an attorney, she has been able to catch a lot of things. Uh, that I think previously had slid through the cracks, so.
I, I think the only other two sniff tests I'd, I'd throw out are, um, is it valuable? is it valuable? Like, should we want to have an attorney in that role, and should we pay for that degree and that experience? Like, is it is it that relevant? And then secondly, if we needed to go out and hire this right now, like, do we? What would we need to pay? Like, let's put let's put her aside and 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 take that hat off and just fill a bucket, fill a fill a box on an org chart, as an example. For someone to do all the tasks, like, are we talking about an eighty eighty thousand dollar job or a fifty thousand dollar job realistically?
Right, so you'd have to have a full-time court administrator, and then you'd probably have a part-time municipal judge. And, right? And so the, I wanna make sure I'm speaking correctly. And so the court administrators looks like make what is the average for that? Sixty? And the part-time? Let's see, judge part-time make about, oh, my goodness, a hundred? That looks like the average, a hundred thousand? Is that what, you see, Stephen? The dark, that dark bar is a hundred thousand?
Just just real quick, I I've I focused on this sheet, if you if you had that in your packet.
Okay.
And so it's it's Councilmember hands, it's really across the board on how they pay based on the part-time, full-time contract. Some of the part-times work eight hours a week, some of them work twenty hours a week. But I mean, it the even a part-timer, I think the the lowest salary was in Marshall as a part-timer, thirty-five thousand dollars a year. And it just went up from there. And so I think what Mayor was saying is that looking at, you know, just the court administrator, I think the average came out around sixty thousand dollars plus the thirty-five. You're in the eighty thousand dollar mark there probably just to get started with bringing that in as a court administrator and a part-time judge, so.
And Stephen, like, when when you look at these positions, are is this is this typically filled by a an actual attorney? Or is it more often than not, it's not an attorney?
I think having the attorney is a big asset. It it does not have to be an attorney, but a a lot of cities, especially once they start getting larger than us, are are I don't know the exact, but probably it's more common for it to be an attorney, and probably we recommend having an attorney, especially if you went to part-time or something like that.
Let's let Jeff weigh in on that real quick.
Both those are fantastic questions, Garth. The, you know, twenty-some-odd years ago, when I started, you know, dealing with J P courts, justice courts, or or municipal courts, it was very common that you did not have an attorney as the as the judge. I can say that over the those years, particularly the last five, ten to five years, it has really changed. The responsibilities are much more, the expectations are much more with regard to things such as discovery. You know, before judges at that level didn't have to deal with discovery issues. Now it's mandated, changes in the law. With regard to the complexity of of motions filed, there are some really unusual ones filed. It is, I think that it is a tremendous move, and I appreciate the council very much appointing a licensed attorney, and that's certainly no knock on Judge Springer. She did a beautiful job for many years, but it's just changed. The bottom line has just changed, and I'll say this, that the liabilities that those courts and cities take on now or or that that can be faced with, it has changed. And so with without getting too far down in the weeds, with Judge Watts coming in and looking at those systems, there have been tremendous efficiencies that she has created. There are tremendous, I'll just say issues, I don't know how else to say it any better, that's about as soft as I can put it, issues that she has corrected that could have been tremendous liabilities for the city. With regard to the administration of justice, when it comes to issuing issuance of capaces, the warrants, entering these things into the state system, she has remedied if I said thousands of cases, that would probably not touch it. So and the way she conducts herself on the bench with, you know, with pro se litigants, with people that represent themselves, but also dealing with attorneys, is just a different level. And the the level of justice being administered, I think, is a whole different level. She's very good with people, she's very good on the bench. She is very good at knowing when to be, you know, when to crack the gavel and when to to show mercy. And I think that those are some things that just come with the experience and with being a licensed attorney. I'll give you one more example, is that just recently there's there what are known as scoff laws, so essentially somebody runs off, doesn't take care of a ticket. There are traditionally some things that could be done that that you have to be exceedingly careful with now, or you can find yourself in in litigation in a federal court. And so the scoff laws are ways to block people from from getting their renewing a license or registering a vehicle. Well, the the license, getting their license portion, we're in the game on that, but that's every, what, seven years? So you get some some fella that, you know, gets two speeding tickets and a registration ticket, and he blows that off thinking, well, I'll just deal with it in seven years. With some of these scoff laws, it's probably done every year when they try to register their vehicle. They're blocked from doing that if it's properly in place. Well, she made inquiry about, do we have these scoff laws properly in place? To which the response was, oh, yeah, yeah, we do, yeah, we do, by the the staff she had at that time. Well, she didn't leave it alone, she went back and she dug and dug, and she found, sure enough, there's a contract in a folder down there, it's not executed. And so just that one thing and having the sophistication to understand that has to be executed and how it actually works, really works, that that one thing alone will generate, and it's not a quarter revenue, but revenue is a byproduct, it that one thing will generate hundreds of thousands of dollars. Plus, it'll bring people to the table to take care of their their responsibilities to the city and the justice system. So it it's just, it's a different day, and I think cities of our size and larger are really just operating almost at their peril now if they don't have a licensed attorney.
That's that's really, like, I I appreciate that. I wasn't trying to be picky, but just trying to figure out, are are we paying, paying an attorney to be a trash truck driver, as an example? I mean, just trying to figure out, like, how how critical, how important is that? And it sounds like it's super important, in addition to her bringing some structural and reorg that it has been really fruitful, so. I I didn't mean to pepper you guys with questions, but that's that's good to know.
No, and and actually, the efficiencies, and if you put all that aside and just look at the efficiencies, if you go apples to apples, not apples to oranges, even though there's, you know, fifty, sixty percent decrease in in case filings this year, still four or five thousand. Her efficiency rate, if you look at the sheer just numbers and and her efficiencies with those numbers are greater than in the past. Plus, we have the proper systems in place. And so it's it's, you know, it I I, Garth, you know, and I guess in a perfect world, it's a blank slate. You know, do you go hire a court coordinator? You know, administrator for sixty thousand or sixty-five, get somebody really worth their salt, yeah. Then go out and hire a part-time lawyer to be the judge? Yes, that 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 would be a good way to do it, but you're probably combined looking at what, you know, a hundred?
Ninety, yeah.
You know, you you're you're looking at well north of a hundred. And and so it's probably, although it's quite the increase, I think for the quality of of the court administration of justice, the efficiencies, the the taking away of the liabilities, is probably a pretty good bang for the buck.
Sounds like a heck of a deal to me.
Okay, anything else, Garth?
No, ma'am.
Okay, did I check with you?
Am I correct in thinking that David Adams was the last attorney that we had as?
He was, and so absolutely, Jay, great, very good memory.
My mom worked with him, so.
Absolutely, absolutely. And, you know, David had been the district attorney here for 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 some terms, a very experienced Judge Adams, but he was part-time.
Yeah.
Or he 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 had a court coordinator, and he was not there all the time, and that's that, I think that was the arrangement, but you're right.
That was merely of curiosity, and while I I'm sure he would be horrified by these numbers, it sounds like a very, very, very fair amount for us to to compensate Ms. Watts for for doing what she does, absolutely.
So when we, if we are in agreement on this and we make a motion, do we say that number? Or do we say grade, I mean, can we say a grade?
Thirty-five, thirty-four.
I would say grade thirty-four.
Grade thirty-four, okay. And then the other thing would be, when we make the motion, to, because the way this is written in the executive set, in the agenda, it says job description. So we could, because we have been talking about the job description, you could allow the mayor and city manager, city attorney, and H R director to develop that job description. Do you have another suggestion, Mario?
Yeah, I think there, I think there is, and we, you know, she is
But we wanted to have some checks, we wanted to have these things put in there.
So there may be, and I'll go back and look, the job description is kind of set, because she is the, she is, you know, an independent member of the judiciary, you know, I mean, she is, it is, it's a real court, and so that's description is set. I know that she's performing these additional duties of coordinator or administrator.
So then we should have called it expectations to counsel because she and I did go over those in pretty great detail, and she was amenable to do that, so.
Right, so I I think you can, you know.
Or do we even have to mention it, since we have?
You really don't, but I mean, but but that's one of those things that, I mean, just as part of the course, they're one of your appointees, you have, should certainly have the option to bring your appointee on an occasional basis to do a review. And so I think that's just part of an annual, and maybe it's one of those things is that you 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 set a grade thirty-four along with a a a discussion with the city, with the city municipal court judge for a future review, something to that effect, but you don't have to say that. You couldn't, so so with regard, it's a very good point, Mayor. With regard to the discussed compensation and job description of municipal judge, that is for executive session. So that doesn't mean you have to take, come out and take action on both of those or any of those. If you came out and simply took action to set the compensation of the municipal court judge, you know, in in the thirty-four, you know, category range, then then that would do it. You know, you 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 got the authority to to have reviews.
If we set it at that, are we setting that precedent in perpetuity? Or are we just doing that for her?
I I don't think that you're saying.
Given the additional tasks that she's handling.
Completely super question, and it kind of falls into what Garth was saying, you know, okay, you know, once we plow this ground, is it plowed this way forever? And I I think the answer my my recommendation is is henceforth always have an attorney in that position. However, I don't think you're married now going forward in perpetuity with having a full-time judge who's performing the the coordination administrative duties.
Right.
And so at some point, if if Judge Watts decided to take her practice in a different area or a parting of the ways, however, that might happen, and you wanted to go back and hire a full-time coordinator and then hire a part-time attorney, I don't think there'd be any problem with that whatsoever.
Okay, so so we can we can separate the two positions again?
Absolutely, and I'll 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 say this, that there are a number of places that have a separation. There there's others that don't. There does need to be a line in the sand, though, between the clerk positions and and the judge position.
Yeah.
And 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 those two should not cross because you get into ex parte situations where litigants then are are having ex parte communication with the judge. And so the the literature, at least what I've read up on, is that's a clear line in the sand. She can perform these others. In a perfect world, I guess you got, you know, different people for different functions, but she can perform those, and those are part of the judicial function, but those clerk duties need to be separate. She does not need to step, she can supervise those folks, but she doesn't need to step over and perform those duties.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, anything else anyone who want to bring us up before we? And I'll and I can, I'll go ahead and make that motion once we get back to executive session. Is anybody left out here that wants to? I don't know that anybody else is here. And it is, what?
Takes someone awfully dedicated to still be here at the moment.
Oh, man, for everything, oh, yeah. Thank you. We are back from executive session. According to Texas Government Code, section five five one dash zero seven four, it is still December fifteenth, twenty twenty. It is seven fifty-four P M. And I will make a motion to set the compensation for our municipal court judge at grade thirty-four.
I'll say.
Okay, got three seconds, that's pretty good. So moved and seconded, and if there's no further discussion, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed, motion passes unanimously. That concludes our meeting for December fifteenth, twenty twenty, and thank you all for attending.